Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the Borough of Saraville Planning Board meeting for September 20th, 2023. Could everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Beth, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Allegra, Mr. Blamar, Mr. Bolton, Mr. Buchanan, Councilman Onoha.
Here.
Councilman Onoha.
Here, thank you.
Ms. Palowski. Ms. Palowski, are you here?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Spazato, Chairman Muller.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Fowler. Mr. Mr. Below, Barlow.
Press.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Beth. Do we have any resolutions for memorialization?
None this evening.
Minutes?
Uh, yes, we do. We have minutes from the September 6th, 2023 meeting.
Entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Anything on the communications agenda?
None this evening.
Site plan subdivisions?
This evening, we have one, Lot 15 Journey Mill LLC preliminary and final major site plan, 18 Journey Mill Road, Saraville, Block 62, Lots 15 and 16.
Good evening, Mr. Kim.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board members and professionals. My name is Carl Kim on behalf of the applicant, Lot 15 Journey Mill LLC. We have provided notice in accordance with the municipal land use law and the borough ordinances besting the board with jurisdiction here this matter. Um, I'll be brief with the opening statement. Um, as you all know, the property is located at 18 Journey Mill Road, generally across some Colony Club Drive. The property is vacant. The northern part, which is on Lot 15, has what's known as Stoner Pond. Um, the the lower portion is Lot 16, where we will be proposing the self-storage facility. There is only one variance required for facade signage. The ordinance require allows one sign of 100 square feet. We have two signs, each 100 square feet, so we need a variance for number of signs and total square footage. And there's a few design exceptions required, which the professionals will go through. Testifying tonight, we have four witnesses. We'll have Mr. Dino Thomasetti, who's a principal of the applicant, to explain the application. Our architect, Grant Alexander, our professional planner and professional engineer, Josh Seawald. Uh, Josh will testify first as an engineer and then at the end of the meeting, at the end of our presentation, rather, as the planner. And we also have our traffic engineer, Corey Chase, um, who will give traffic testimony. Um, we have received the board engineer's report dated September 20th and the board planners' report dated September 15, 2023. And we will go through those reports during the course of testimony. If there's no other preliminary matters, I'll move to the first witness.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first witness will be Mr. Dino Thomasetti. Please come up and raise your right hand. You sworn in.
Sir, first, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address for the record.
Um, my name is Dino Thomasetti. T O M A S S E T T I.
Professional address?
1590 Troy Avenue, Brooklyn, New York.
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony I give before this board will be the whole truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
You're a witness, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Uh, Mr. Thomasetti, can you explain the relationship to the applicant and this project?
Uh, I'm the managing member of 15 Lot, uh, 15, Lot 15 Journey Mill LLC.
In your, uh, in your capacity as the manager responsible for this project, and you're familiar with it?
That is correct.
And, oh, sorry, you should have the microphone. You're picking me up, Beth?
I hear you fine.
Thank you. Um, have you previously built and or operated self-storage facilities?
Yes, over the last 13 years, I've, uh, built approximately seven, uh, storage facilities, and I have a number of them, uh, under construction at at this time. Uh, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and a few other markets.
Thank you. And, um, can you explain to the board why you chose this particular property for this self-storage facility?
Uh, we chose this property because it's, you know, we find that it's pretty well-suited to, uh, the self-storage facility in terms of the size and shape. Uh, we we understand that it's a permitted use, and, uh, we've done a a market analysis as we do with all of these sites, and we've determined that there is a a need in the area and in the community for, uh, storage facility.
And presently, you don't have a tenant or an operator, is that correct?
Uh, at the present time, we have not selected an operator. We usually wait until we're, uh, about to start construction before we finalize, uh, the operator.
Thank you. And could you explain to the board, um, once the site is constructed and the self-storage facility is operating, what are the general hours, um, that it will be open?
Uh, normal hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's the facility open hours, and then office hours will be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
And both of those are seven days a week?
That's correct.
And the the general hours is 7:00 to 10:00. That's when there will be employees on site, as well as, uh, people who have units can come in and load stuff or check on their belongings, correct?
Uh, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, there may be maintenance personnel on site, but there won't be anybody working in the, uh, in the, what we call the retail store.
Okay, and that's only 8:00 to 5:00?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, um, at any one time, approximately, how many employees would be on site?
Um, at most, we'll have five employees on site, but typically, it'll range between three and five employees.
Okay. And do you have any security measures?
Uh, we have, uh, cameras, uh, set up on the exterior of the building and, uh, also in the hallways and some of the main corridors of the building and the retail store.
And do you have any backup power generators or things of that nature?
Uh, there will be no generator on this property.
And in the board planner's report, he had mentioned, um, potential of, um, solar panels on the roof. Have you given any contemplation to that?
Yes, we typically do put solar on the roof, but it depends on, uh, the programs that are available at the time of construction. Um, a lot of it is, uh, dependent on the subsidies that are available at the time, uh, for the viability of, uh, of being able to do it.
And you understand that if you decide to put that on, we might have to come back to the board and certainly the borough for certain permits and approvals?
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Um, the board engineer in his report asked, um, if we would consolidate lots 15 and 16. Is that something that is agreeable?
There would be no issue, uh, in consolidating those lots.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Thomasetti, unless the board or the professionals have any questions.
Anyone have a question? Go ahead.
So the roof will look constructed so that it can accept solar panels, even if you're not going to do it initially?
That is correct, yes. The roof construction will be able to accommodate solar panels in the future, if we can do it.
Excuse me, can you talk into the microphone?
Sorry. Security-wise, you had mentioned you have cameras, but a lot of the facilities we see like this are fenced in completely. Yours is not?
Uh, the, I I'll have to check with the engineering team to confirm, but I don't believe that we have a full fence around the entire perimeter.
But do you have somebody monitoring the cameras then, 24 hours a day?
Um, yeah, well, we, the cameras are on a closed circuit, so, uh, while there's, um, somebody working, uh, within the facility, uh, they will be monitoring the cameras. Uh, we'll also have an alarm system, uh, so in the event that there's a break-in or something like that, uh, that would be connected to a central station, uh, monitoring.
In the board engineer's report, he also had mentioned, what are you going to do with your trash and recyclables? I'm not sure if that's a question for you or for the engineer.
Our engineer will handle that question.
That's all. It's a chairman. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have questions? Lexus or councilman have any questions online?
No, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomasetti. Be here for the remainder of the evening if there's any further questions.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to call our architect, Grant Alexander.
Sure. My name is Grant Alexander. Last name is spelled A L E X A N D E R. Uh, the, my professional address is 7930 Clayton Road, St. Louis, Missouri. Uh, I'm Suite 300, need to add that, uh, 63117.
Raise your right hand. You swear a testimony I give before this board will be the whole truth, so hope you got it?
Yes, I do.
And, um, Mr. Alexander, since you'll be testifying as an expert in the area of architecture, can you give the board the benefit of your education licensure?
Sure. I graduated from Kansas State University, uh, with a degree in architecture. I've been a licensed architect since 2015. I am currently licensed in the state of New Jersey and most recently testified and was accepted as an expert in, uh, the board at Linden last week.
So any members of the board have any questions about the qualifications of Mr. Alexander? Anyone online? No? Okay. We're, the board's satisfied with your credentials.
Thank you. Uh, do you want to put yourself in the board?
Sure.
The exhibits that Mr. Alexander will be using are the sheets from the submitted of his architectural plans. There's no new plans. They have not been colorized or changed in any fashion. We'll have him reference the sheet numbers as he goes through each plan sheet.
These were all previously submitted or part of the application?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So we have, uh, the self-storage building.
If you would just indicate which sheet number you're.
Sure, I'm looking at sheet 06. It's showing architectural elevations.
Thank you. Please continue.
Yep. Um, I'm just confirming the building height. What we show, approximately 46 feet. There is some parapet that extends above that, but in no case will it go beyond the zoning required 50 feet. The exterior of the building is all painted metal panel, glazing with some, uh, canopies and some accent trim work. I'll flip over to the floor plan sheets. This is sheet 01 through.
Well, as you get.
We'll start with 01.
As you get to each sheet, yeah, just identify as you flip to it. So this is sheet, uh, 01?
Sheet 01 showing the, uh, level one.
And level one's the ground floor?
Level one is the ground floor. We have, uh, an interior loading zone, which is interior of the building outline, but still open air. We have several on, uh, on-grade loading doors, and then we have the majority of the building is internal, uh, self-storage units.
And could you, um, show the office area?
Sure. At the northeast corner here, we have an office. It's approximately 30 feet by 30 feet, containing approximately 900 square feet. Uh, moving up through sheets 02, well, levels 2, 3, and 4 of the building, so sheet 02, 03, and 04, we're showing the, uh, internal layout of the building with the, uh, the unit mix of self-storage units. These range in size from 5 feet by 5 feet all the way up to 10 feet by 30 feet. Each floor is approximately 33,250 square feet with a total building square footage of 133,000, approximately. The roof of this building will only accommodate the overrun of the elevator and any stair bulkheads. That's sheet 05.
Thank you.
Uh, and then it will also accommodate any mechanical units that we have that service the building. The building overall is a Class A facility, and it will be climate-controlled.
And is it fully sprinkled?
It is a fully sprinkled building. That's correct.
And, um, the board planner in his report asked that we give some further detail on the monument sign. Can you discuss that briefly?
Sure. The monument sign will be set at the, at, uh, the building entry off the street. It will be within, uh, permitted zoning sizes, and, uh, right now, we have it as sort of a, um, uh, a placeholder until a user or a operator is selected, in which case the, the monument sign will be populated with the information for that user and, or I'm sorry, that operator, and it will incorporate, uh, colors and some other aspects of the building to make it align aesthetically.
And the, um, if you would go to the first sheet that we used this evening, can I remember the sheet number? Yeah, that's good. The one you just pulled, that's fine. Sue, the, um, does that have the facade signs? No, it doesn't. I apologize.
Here.
It does. So the facade signs as well is, says life storage. That's a particular operator, not necessarily this one, and those were placed in the building to show the location approximate size of the signage. Is that correct?
Sure that, yes, this is sheet 07. This shows renderings of the building. Uh, as you mentioned, currently, we show two signs, uh, the north, uh, on the, in the northwest view and the northeast view. Uh, they say life storage. They are, uh, they are representative right now of a location and general size of the signage, although they are not necessarily the final design of the signage. That'll be determined once a, uh, operator is selected.
But we've committed to that. We will only have the two signs. Each will be a total of 100 square feet.
That is correct. We'll have only the two signs. They will be no larger than 100 square feet each.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have for this witness.
Any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Alexander? Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
The facade signs, just, they're going to be backlit?
Correct.
And kind of a low intensity, not, not LED where it's very bright lighting?
The, um, engineer has the detail on the lighting, so he'll testify for that.
And relative to the monument sign, you don't have warning to add to the sign right now, but we can get the engineer to put a detail on the, on the plans, showing the size of the sign that's conforming.
That's correct. We'll agree to that as a condition of approval.
And the loading area that you had shown, it's below the building. Is there just one door, uh, to enter, exit the building where the loading area is? You can fit, like, give it two trucks, three trucks in there, size-wise?
Sure, that, you can fit multiple, multiple vehicles in there at one time. I'll pull back out here, sheet 01. We've got the loading zone on, uh, plan north side of the building. There are, are six units that open into that loading zone, so in theory, there could be multiple vehicles in there at one time, although it will never be, uh, you know, a parking lot, so to speak.
So that loading area is only for those six units? It doesn't give you access to the rest of the building?
It's foreseeable that there will be access to the interior of the building from that area. Um, but right now, all that opens to that area are those six unit doors.
I guess I was on the impression that you could.
Sure, yeah, there will be access from this interior loading zone to the corridors inside the building and to the elevators up and down through the.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
There's no storage of vehicles planned?
There's no storage of vehicles inside the building or outside the building.
Mr. Alexander, did you have a chance to review Mr. Fowler's September 15, 2023 report?
Yes.
Okay. Um, from an architectural standpoint, are there any, uh, recommendations that the applicant is not going to comply with in Mr. Fowler's report?
Excuse me, Chairman. Could you point us to the section you're referring?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, in terms, I know, I know he's an architect, and I know that there's a lot of different topics covered. Um, I I was just asking whether there were any architectural features or suggestions on, in this report that he didn't believe the applicant would comply with.
Uh, I I apologize, Chairman. The, the, the comments I saw were more related to site issues like landscaping and things of that nature, but if Mr. Fowler has any specifics in the report that I'm missing, please let us know.
Sure.
The, uh, site engineer will talk about some of the exterior features and landscaping and things of that nature.
What about number six, the roof mounted mechanical equipment screen with the parapet walls, et cetera?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay. The way that we would plan to handle those, and and we'll hear from the engineer as well, is with the parapet heights that are there and the angles of view from the ground up to those units, the idea would be to cut off the line of sight to those units based on their placement on the roof and and through the parapet wall.
And again, we'll have the engineer give further details on that. He was planning to address that comment.
Okay. There, wait a minute. Just want to make sure. Questions? Does anyone online have any questions for Mr. Alexander? From the board?
No, I don't.
Not at the moment. Thank you.
So just so I'm clear, this building is essentially, um, very close in footprint to the, um, prior approvals that were granted the applicant, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have to look up the resolutions. I I don't think it's any larger. It may actually be a little small.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to be, be clear. I guess we'll deal with the, uh, with the engineer on that.
Mr. Chairman, I can clarify that. Uh, this footprint is approximately 33,250. The prior approval had four buildings, approximately 46,000 square feet, to about 13,000 square feet less.
Gotcha.
That's why we like having Mr. Cornell here. Thank you, Jim.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you.
First, Chairman, just one question. Sorry, is that, one more question for you. Uh, you're, you're getting away, didn't you? Um, on the building height, can we just have that posted on what the actual building height is going to be? Because you have it at 46.7 feet, and that's to the roof line, but the parapet does extend another three feet or so, so that we know it's 49 feet or 50 feet, whatever the number is?
That's right. We can post it, but as I said, we won't go over the 50 feet, but it will be posted.
Yeah, the, uh, just for your clarification, do the exact detail of the architectural plans and the engineering plan have not been finalized, so on the resolution-compliant architectural plans and engineering plans, we will make sure it's detailed out on both plans and both plans match.
Right, thank you.
And of course, they'll be below the 50-foot maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman.
Next witness, Mr. Kim.
Next witness will be our, um, professional engineer and professional planner, Mr. Josh Seawald. Thank you, Seawald.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address.
Certainly. Josh Seawald, S E W A L D, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey.
And just to clarify, your first full name is Joshua?
Yes.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. You swear a testimony I give before this board will be this whole truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
You're a witness, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Um, Mr. Seawald, do you give the board the benefit of your educational licensure?
Uh, certainly. And good evening, everybody. Again, Josh from Dynamic Engineering. Uh, I have a Bachelor's of Science as well as a Master's of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer as well as professional planner in New Jersey, testified before over 100 land use boards, and I'm a partner at Dynamic Engineering Consultants.
And you've been accepted as an executive for boards in Saraville?
It's been quite some time, but yes.
Uh, any members of the board have any questions regarding, uh, Mr. Seawald's qualifications? Anyone online? Hearing no objection, we accept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated before, at this time, Mr. Seawald will be testifying as a professional engineer, and then he'll, uh, come back up and testify as a planner, uh, later in our presentation. Uh, Mr. Seawald, I'll just turn it over to you. You can go through your plans and your exhibits. Um, please, the, um, new exhibits that you've created, please mark Exhibit A1, A2, et cetera, with this evening's date and explain what they are before you get into the substance of each, uh, board.
Certainly, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Um, this is the aerial map exhibit, uh, prepared by my firm, uh, dated, uh, September 19, 2023. This is the same image, image that came from the civil set. However, it is colorized and outlined for tonight's presentation purpose, so we'll still continue to mark it A1. Um, to the top of the plan is north, bottom of the page is south. We have Journey Mill Road running in that north-south direction. The property is highlighted in that yellow box. And on the plan also, you'll see some blue lines. That is your zoning map overlaid onto the aerial. Overall, the purpose of this exhibit is just to discuss some of the existing conditions and focus on the property that we're discussing this evening. As you can see, the property is about 14 and, uh, 0.2 acres. It is completely undeveloped today. There have been some prior approvals on the site, but nothing yet has been constructed. On the northeast corner of the property, we do have Steiner Lake. To the west, we have further SED zone, further undeveloped, and South River. To the south of us, there is some industrial outdoor storage, light manufacturing uses. To the north of us is our zone boundary line with the B1 zone. Again, our neighbor to the north is also a typical, uh, indoor, um, industrial outdoor storage type facility. And then right across Journey, uh, Mill Road to the east is the R7 zone, where we have a mixture of single-family developments as well as Colony Drive Club as well. Uh, overall, the property today is completely, as I mentioned, undeveloped. There are trees, wetlands, as well as a lake on the parcel. Uh, overall, um, there are no improvements to water management facilities or utilities associated with this parcel. Moving along to Exhibit A2. This is the same aerial map exhibit. And we will only have this exhibit up for a little bit. Uh, it's called Aerial Overlay Exhibit. Again, prepared by my, my firm, today's date, we'll call it Exhibit A2. The purpose of this exhibit is the same orientation, same map size, and in the bottom corner on the southern, uh, side property line, you'll see that orange box. That orange box is what we're here for this evening, the proposed self-storage multi-story facility. As you can see, from a scaling standpoint, it only really impacts a small portion of the overall property. The rest of the parcel is still being left alone, encumbered by wetlands, floodplain, as well as that lake located near the northeast corner of the property. Just wanted to give the board and the members of the public some context and how much we're building on the 14.2 acres. And now moving along to my final exhibit for this evening is Exhibit A3. Called Site Plan Rendering. Again, prepared by my firm, today's date. This is the site plan overlaid onto the landscape plan and rendered for presentation purposes. Same orientation, top of the plan is north, bottom of the plan is to the south. Journey Mill is running in the north-south direction. A lot more zoomed in, so you can see some detail associated with the site plan. Starting at, uh, Journey Mill Road, um, we come in with a, uh, full movement driveway, a long driveway throat. On each side of that driveway will be, uh, two above-ground stormwater management facilities. And then as you approach the beginning of the building, you'll see that we have some, uh, parking spaces on the perimeter side of the access aisle that's facing east and to the north. There's a total of 27 parking spaces compliant with your parking ordinance. And then surrounding the building, you'll see a striped area for loading purposes. As you heard from the architect a few moments ago, there are some drive-up units that will be facing the eastern direction, and on the northern side, there's also that drive-in loading area where the big garage door opens up and people will be able to access the elevator as well as some of the internal units. As you can see in this yellow hatched area, we have 25 feet of loading that wraps around the building, another 25 feet in an access aisle. So more than enough maneuverability for anyone that has a pickup truck, maybe is trailering something behind it, or even that U-Haul truck as you're moving, uh, from your facility over to ours. Overall, the site plan is pretty straightforward. There's not too much else to talk about. Because the site is completely undeveloped today, all brand-new utilities will be brought from Journey Mill Road. Sanitary sewer, uh, fire, domestic, gas, and electric will all be coming up our driveway from Journey Mill Road. In regards to stormwater management, the site, as I mentioned before, is completely undeveloped, so we do have to comply with today's stormwater standards. We do have two above-ground facilities and one underground facility. I'm happy to report that we do have our DEP permit from the flood hazard area. Um, Land Use Group, we have our verification and individual permit. What that means basically is that the DEP has looked at our site. We know that it's near floodplain, and we know that they have agreed to the design for grading as well as the stormwater management facility, which is comprehensive. The last two items I'd like to focus on is lighting and landscaping. I'd like to say that we have a pretty significant landscaping plan for, uh, this smaller of a size development. Overall, we have 101 trees spread throughout the perimeter of the site, including in some of the wetlands area. We have 228 shrubs, and overall, it's well-blended. One of the main reasons we have such a robust landscaping plan is due to the ordinance that you guys have. So thank you for having a, uh, very robust and compliant landscaping. I believe that we have addressed all of them except the certain number of trees, which we'll get to towards my planning testimony. But the other characteristics of your landscape ordinance, colors, shapes, size, species, I believe we do comply with. Any recommendations from your professionals about those features, we'd be happy to comply with. Lighting overall is pretty straightforward as well. We're fortunate that we have this nice natural buffer around the entire facility, so there are a couple of wall-mounted lights as well as aerial light poles, but there will be no spill over to any of our properties, including Journey Mill Road. You won't be able to see the lights as you're driving up and down Journey Mill, except when you, uh, approach the driveway, and that's for safety purposes. Overall, there will be, of course, LED lights for efficiency and environmental-friendly reasons, and generally, they turn off, uh, well, about an hour after the site shuts down, which you heard from the applicant is about 10 o'clock. So there will be some security lighting at the doors for security reasons, but the rest of the site will be dimmed. To answer Mr. Fowler's question a little bit ago, the signage associated with the building will be LED backlit, but they could be dimmed to ensure that we comply with all lighting standards.
And, um, just briefly, and usually I like to say to the board that we'll agree to all conditions in the engineers and the planners' report for this. And just briefly, and usually I like to say to the board that we'll agree to all conditions, and the engineers and the planners report for this. Some specific questions I want to make sure we touch upon. The can you, and we also had an earlier question, can you explain the site refuse pickup recycling for the property?
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Kim. This type of facility, we do not want to have what we call dumping. So some of the other styles of self-storage has really big parking areas for RV trailer, and it promotes dropping off your old couch, or it promotes dumping things. We do not have a trash enclosure or refuse facility on the site. Because, as you heard from the applicant, there's only a couple of employees operating from eight to five, the trash generation of that small nine-hundred-square-foot office is maybe some paperwork and their local lunch. So what they have internally is just a regular dumpster pail, and they will then call a private hauler to come once, maybe twice every couple of weeks to come and take that garbage pail out. So the purpose of not having a separate trash enclosure is to literally make sure that our tenants realize that this is not a place to start dumping in our big enclosure area.
Thank you, and certainly.
Certainly.
What happens is the storage unit, somebody doesn't pay the rent, they overdo, you gotta foreclose on it for want of a better. And there's just trash or items that, how are they going to be disposed of?
We would call a third party to come and clean it out.
Okay.
And then going, run through the engineer's report. The engineer also requested that we update our water distribution design report to include the fire flows. Is something we agree to?
We certainly can. It'll be approximated. Basically, when we go into full CDs of the building, should we receive approval from this board, a fire suppression consultant will be hired for the building design, and those exact flows will be provided through the building department, but we can get approximated for resolution compliance, Mr. Kim.
Thank you. And would you discuss, I know, I know we haven't gotten our formal review from the county yet. They've been a little backed up. Can you advise the board of your conversations with the county regarding the project in general, and specifically, if you would talk about some of the roadway improvements that they have requested of us and that we've agreed to so far?
Certainly. We've met with the county, and essentially, we will be providing a striped left turn lane into our driveway and sidewalk from our driveway heading south. One of the design exceptions that we have for you this board this evening, and we're going to reference now Exhibit A two, just to give the full frontage on Journey Mill Road. One of your ordinances asked for sidewalk along the entire property frontage. As I mentioned, we have a lake that goes right up and underneath the road, as well as freshwater wetlands, very regulated areas. We are limited in how much disturbance we are allowed to have in those regulated areas. So we explained that to Middlesex County Planning Board, and they concurred and said, no problem. Can you bring them to the south so that the area that is upland, you are then installing that, and the applicant was willing to comply. So in Journey Mill Road, there is a dedicated left turn that goes into Colony Club Drive. So heading northbound, we will be providing the same left turn into our driveway. Now, you'll hear from my business partner, Corey Chase, shortly, that self-storage does not generate a lot of traffic, so I don't want the board to think that we need that left turn lane because it generates a lot of traffic. That left turn lane was requested by Middlesex County purely for good design purposes in the road. You have a left turn lane heading into Colony Drive. We're going to have a left turn lane that comes into our facility.
And so the county is just requesting sidewalks from our entrance to the south of the property line, correct?
That's correct.
And while we're talking about driveways, it's noted in the engineer's report that the driveway width is undersized. It's supposed to be thirty feet. Can you address that?
Certainly, Mr. Kim. Your your ordinance and design standards ask for a thirty-foot wide drive aisle. We are proposing twenty-five feet, and we can reference back to Exhibit A three. It is, in my professional opinion, that twenty-five foot is pretty standard for all commercial facilities. And as we mentioned, we do have some environmental restraints on the north and south side of our driveway due to the wetlands. When you actually get on site, although the delineation is twenty-five feet, the loading area is another twenty-five. So you have fifty feet of pavement on both of those sides of the building, more than enough adequate space to be able to K-turn or U-turn around. So overall, it's our professional opinion that it's a better design to have twenty-five feet coming off the roadway, channelizing the flow of traffic, as well as minimizing our impact to some of those wetlands on each side.
Thank you. We'll have the traffic engineer give more detail on it as well. The board engineer also requested we provide further detail on our concrete curb detailing. Is that something we can agree to as a condition?
Absolutely.
Engineer also notes, and we require a design exception, that we do not have sidewalks within the perimeter of the parking lot. Can you explain why we haven't provided those?
Certainly, and I did not write the ordinance, but I assume the ordinance was contemplating sidewalk to take people that come out of their parking space and put them on an elevated area as you maybe maneuver through multifamily, commercial, or industrial type. The operation of this facility requires an at-grade parking lot. So as you park to then either go to the office or go to your unit, you're going to have something behind you, self-storage, right? You're going to be carrying something, wheeling something in. It was, it is better for us to keep it all at grade and ask for that design exception for operational purposes. So as you park or come in with your U-Haul truck or your pickup truck, you're going to have all items at grade and bring it into the building. Where traditionally, as you know, when you go to a commercial-type facility, you open up the door out of the commercial, and you're on a platform of a six-foot, a six-inch-tall sidewalk, and then you go into the parking area. So the main reason we're seeking a design exception to not have perimeter sidewalks is because we don't need to walk around the perimeter of our building. It's the reverse. We need to walk towards our building, and that must be at grade.
Thank you. And now moving on to the planner's report, can you just explain the location, the details regarding that triple-vehicle charging station on site?
Certainly. As everyone, I believe, knows, there was a recent law, I believe, last year passed by New Jersey that requires certain new developments to have EV charging, and we do have one proposed located on the eastern side parking area, and the details are in the back of the civil set. So we do have one EV charging station.
And when that's installed, it will be actually activated with the charger operation?
That's correct.
Thank you. I know you had touched on this, but the planner was looking for a little more detail regarding loading spaces to handle SU thirty box truck and turning movements. Can you give a little further detail on that for us?
Certainly. So one of the last sheets of the civil set, we showed two circulation plans. One is SU thirty, which is a fancy term for a thirty-foot box truck. Think of a small U-Haul that you would rent to bring your either furniture or other items to the facility. And then the second is the fire truck circulation plan. The box truck is much smaller, and we showed that on the last sheet that the fire truck can circulate here. So we are confident that a box truck could stage in one of the two loading areas, as well as should a second box truck come, there'd be more than enough adequate pavement to allow them to maneuver through the site.
Thank you. Another comment of the board planner is requesting direction arrows be added to the ends of the main driveways. That's something we can comply with?
Absolutely.
The architect touched upon this comment before, but we told the board you would be giving further details about the line of sight from the road and the effect of the parapet in screening some of the roof mechanics. Can you give us some further detail on that?
Certainly. So as you heard, the building is somewhere between forty-seven and fifty feet tall, and then the actual roof line to the top of the parapet is about three feet. That mechanical equipment will be centralized, if not set towards the rear of the building. As you are fifty feet lower at grade, the line of sight, you will not be able to see the actual HVAC equipment. Basically, as you're driving along or even parking on site, you won't be able to see the top of it. You will only see the top of the parapet.
Thank you. And also requested that, and maybe, I'm sure it's on our detail, provide further details on the protective fencing around the retaining wall and detention basin.
We'll certainly comply.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you've already touched on this, that we'll comply with the landscape and design, number of trees, species, and any comments and recommendations of the board planner. Is that correct?
We do comply with all sections, in my professional opinion, other than the exact number of trees that are required. A tree contribution will be required here. But yes, the other aspects of the performance standards and landscaping and buffering, we do comply with.
Thank you. The board planner also asks us to address if there's any irrigation proposed for some or all the landscaping. Can you provide details?
Certainly, when, should we be approved by this board, and when we go to building permit, it'll be a design build for the irrigation around the building as well as in the drive aisle. The landscaping that will be within the wetlands will not be irrigated.
Thank you. And I think your testimony addressed this, but the board planner had talked about, if needed, that we would put houseside shields on many lights to avoid spillage. So if there's any issue with light spillage when the project is constructed, that's something we can work with the planner?
We certainly can. And Mr. Fowler, I think we could work through in resolution compliance. Some of them may not be necessary due to the existing tree cover, but maybe as we get closer to Journey Mill, we can add them. It won't be a problem.
Thank you. And I don't know, and we're trying to get in contact before tonight's meeting. Have we been able to get in touch with fire prevention or traffic safety?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we'll agree to meet with them and comply with their recommendations?
Absolutely.
Thank you. There was a comment, which I'll address of the, sorry, the board planner, the applicant does recognize that there's affordable housing obligations, including payment of fees. In regard to this application, we certainly agree to comply with those. And then Mr. Sewald will return after the traffic engineer to give planning testimony. That was all the questions for the site engineer. If there's any questions from the board or professionals, we'll certainly entertain those.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Sewald? Michael?
Sure.
Just, I guess, to our attorneys first, the, one of my questions was abandoning the prior approval. I guess you had the major site plan approval. Maybe you got one one-year extension at some point, so you may have opportunity for other extensions down the road. So if this is all approved and signed off, it will be, those approvals will be abandoned?
Yes, I think Mr. Cornell attached them to his report. I think there was two prior applications, the most recent one, and a further one. We will relinquish those rights upon approval of the application this evening.
Thank you. To the engineer, just on the trash and recyclables, I know, again, with these type of facilities, you don't want to make it an area where people, hey, I don't want that old couch anymore. They take and they throw it in your dumpster. But people generate, I think, a lot of cardboard, a lot of shrink wrap when they come in and out of these facilities. They're supposed to just take that back with them. You're not going to have any facility for cardboard or any any trash. It's not only your, the employees of the of the facility that are going to be generating trash. Again, the people themselves will have something. Most likely, you know, when they're coming to a unit to initially load it, there's always things that you don't need. Again, a lot, a lot of cardboard, a lot of shrink wrap that you need a place for.
Yeah, and and I apologize for not clarifying. The, it's not that there won't be more than some of the items that I mentioned, is that it is internally stored. That's all, is that it will be internally stored in the building. If it sincerely was a concern of the board, I know I have space on the property that I could drop on a ten-by-ten enclosure for a receptacle for recycling and trash, but these facilities typically operate with internal storage.
Again, it's going to be separated from the recyclables, from the trash, and the people occupying the units, they'll know about that and know where to dump it on their way out of the building.
That's why we have three to five employees operating in the facility. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other reason it's inside is, as we all know, even though the dumpsters with enclosures and lids, things tend to blow around, so this will have a cleaner.
Inside is fine. Just wanted to make sure there was a place for it.
Thank you.
Any questions from Alexis or councilman online? No? Okay.
Nope, not at the moment.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sewald.
And calling our next witness, which is our traffic engineer, Mr. Corey Chase.
Good evening, everyone.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address.
Certainly, it's Corey, C.O.R.E.Y., last name's Chase, C.H.A.S.E., located at two forty-five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Raise your right hand. You swear a testimony before this board. Will you be the whole truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Your witness, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Would you give the board the benefit of your educational licensure?
Certainly, again, Corey Chase, principal with the firm Dynamic Traffic, Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering from the University of Massachusetts, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of New Jersey, license is currently in good standing, and I've been qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over a hundred and twenty-five municipalities throughout the state, including the borough previously.
Any members of the board or online have any questions regarding Mr. Chase's qualifications as a traffic expert? Hearing none, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. That's okay.
Mr. Chase, if you would just give the board the benefit of the analysis in your traffic impact statement that was submitted with the application?
Certainly. So our role in the application was to consult with Mr. Sewald, as well as Middlesex County, as far as the the site access, onsite circulation, proposed parking supply, as well as to assess the traffic impacts associated with the development of this property. As part of that, we prepared a traffic impact study. It was last revised July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, that was previously submitted to the borough. As Mr. Sewald mentioned, we did have the opportunity to have a pre-application meeting with the county. At that time, we specifically discussed the proposed access location, as well as some, as Mr. Sewald characterized, minor improvements to Journey Mill Road, which would encompass the restriping of that existing hatched core area that currently divides Journey Mill Road in the northbound and southbound direction, to provide a dedicated left turn lane into the subject property, which would effectively form back-to-back left turn lanes with the southbound left turn lane. Club Drive. As part of our traffic impact study, we looked at the overall traffic generation of the proposed development to take a look at the peak hour traffic impacts. As Mr. Cornell mentioned, the site was previously approved for about forty-six thousand square feet of light industrial space. Certainly, self-storage in and of itself generates with less traffic than that prior approval. But just for the board's benefit, the summary of those peak hour traffic generation volumes, it's located on Table three, which is on page six of our report. You can see, even during peak times, the development's projected to generate only a maximum of twenty-three trips during the peak hour, to give the board an idea as to what that level of traffic generation constitutes. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the national standard, and then the New Jersey Department of Transportation, they've set a threshold of one hundred additional trips during a peak hour as being a significant increase in traffic. So this is approximately twenty percent of what one would constitute a significant increase in traffic. So from pure traffic generation standpoint, again, not a significant traffic generator. It would generate less traffic than the prior approval. Based on the applicant's experience at other developments that they operate, they see have facilities that experience three to five customers a day. So again, you know, a very limited traffic generator once these facilities are leased up. We did do traffic counts, did do an off-site traffic at the adjacent intersections to the north, Nickel Avenue, at Furman Avenue, and Washington Road West. We did a pre and post-development analysis to compare the the operational conditions to see if there were any resulting degradations in level of service as a result of this development. We found based on our analysis that there are no operational degradations as a result of the limited traffic impacts generated by this development. As Mr. Sewald mentioned, adequate loading on the eastern and northern building facades. We do provide twenty-five-foot drive aisles, which, again, in my professional opinion, is more than sufficient to accommodate the limited traffic generation of this use, and we do provide compliant parking with the borough standards on site. Mr. Kim, that's all I had for direct testimony. Be happy to answer any questions that the board or professionals have.
And that's the extent of Mr. Chase's testimony. He's available for questions.
Mr. Chase, can you just describe the traffic circulation on the site?
Certainly. As Mr. Sewald mentioned, we are providing a full-axis driveway along Journey Mill Road. So what that allows the patrons to do is enter from both a left and a right turn, as well as egress the site in both a left and a right turn. As you enter the site, as I mentioned, there's a yellow hatched area on the eastern and northern building facades. That's twenty-five feet in width. That constitutes a loading area. So patrons of this facility would be able to park in that area to accomplish loading and unloading activities. There's also an internal loading zone to the facility. It's a hundred and seventy-five feet wide. Just assuming conservatively a twenty-five-foot width for a vehicle, you know, you could accommodate seven vehicles within that internal loading zone. There are also proposed overhead doors along the eastern building facade, so patrons would be able to access those overhead doors directly from that loading zone. So there is a twenty-five-foot drive aisle along the eastern and northern building facades. Those drive aisles are both two-way. And again, as Mr. Sewald mentioned, with consideration of the twenty-five-foot-wide drive aisle plus the twenty-five-foot loading area, you actually have fifty feet of maneuvering area directly adjacent to the northern and eastern building facades.
Will there be directional signs?
There are directional painted arrows in the drive aisles. We weren't intending on putting actual directional signage. However, if the board feels that that would be necessary, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Chase?
Just Chairman, just just a comment for the board's information. We we had said that there was a forty-six thousand, a thousand-square-foot project previously approved for the site. I went back and looked at that traffic report. During the peak hour, they had sixty trips generated compared to twenty that are proposed for this site. So you can see a lot of reduction in P and peak hour traffic as a result of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone physically here from the board have any questions? Online, Councilman Alexis, any questions for Mr. Chase on the traffic issues?
No, I don't have.
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Mr. Chase, I assume you read the, the planner and the engineers' reports?
I did.
Anything from a traffic standpoint, any recommendations that you wouldn't agree with or agree to comply with?
There's not, sir, other than obviously we're asking for the waiver for the reduction in drive aisle width, which again, you know, consistent with Mr. Sewold's testimony, in my professional opinion, you know, based on the limited traffic in the available circulation area, it's more than sufficient to accommodate this development.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
And then our last witness will be recalling Mr. Sewold to give planning testimony. He's already been qualified as a professional planner.
Mr. Sewold, do you understand you're still under oath?
I do.
Okay, you're not going to testify as a planner?
That's correct.
All right.
Josh, alternatively, can you just go through the bulk variants we need for the signage and the design exceptions that we've requested?
Certainly. As you heard through various parts of the testimony tonight, we are permitted use, that's why we're before you this evening, in the SED zone. I've had the opportunity of reviewing the master plan as well. And one of the benefits of the site plan that's been presented for you this evening is that it is fully conforming with all bulk standards. So the setbacks associated with the front, side, and rear yards are compliant. We're greatly under the maximum allowable building coverage, as well as the maximum allowable impervious coverage due to a lot of the environmental features that are on sites, such as wetlands, floodplain, and Steiner Lake. So overall, we are here this evening to discuss two C variances and three design exceptions. Let me go through them just to refresh the board's memory, and then I'll get into some of the planning proofs necessary. The first one, variance one, is for having two building signs. As you heard from the architect, we'll be providing one on the eastern side facade, as well as the northern side facade. Your ordinance contemplates one, we are seeking two. The second variance is for the maximum square footage of those building signs. The ordinance actually contemplates one square foot per linear feet of the building. However, it maxes it out at 100 square feet. We are proposing 159 square feet. So let's talk about each variance. The first variance having two building signs instead of the maximum permitted in one. As you heard from the architect, as well as going through some of the site plan, we do have really two front facades for this building. When you pull up to the eastern facade, they are drive-up units. The door to the office building is located on the northern side. In addition to that, that is where the general loading will be. It is purely to allow the two facades that will be operated with to have identification. In addition to that, we are looking to have some sightline visibility as you're traveling along Journey Mill Road. One of the components of the maximum size area is I took the front facade, it's 190 feet in length, times the by about 46 feet in height up to the roof. And the total square footage of that facade is 8,700 square feet. When you divide that out by 159 square feet, which is slightly larger than the 100-foot max that your ordinance contemplates, that is 1.8% of the facade sign. The reason I bring that up for you is because we believe that it will not have a negative impact to the facility or the surrounding areas. It's such a compliant building with height, size, building coverage, maximum lock coverage. But this sign that we're contemplating, even though we're seeking your relief this evening, is only 1.8% of the overall facade. The three design exceptions we went through as well, sidewalk, drive aisle width, lost my place real quick. And the type of parking with the sidewalk. So three, three design exceptions, I'm sorry. Sidewalk along the frontage, sidewalk around the facility, and the drive aisle width. So overall, again, I had the opportunity to review your zoning ordinance and your master plan, and we are certainly in compliance with the vision of the master plan and the zoning ordinance for the specific use. In addition to that, at the site plan level, we are greatly compliant with all the bulk standards for the size of the development. The two variances that we're seeking, we're going to believe, fall under the C2 flexible variance standards. We believe that the board that you have this evening can permit the relief of these requests because of the alternative design that we provided. And that alternative design that we discussed is an improved planning and zoning measure, as we talked about, the 1.8% of the overall facade area. We believe that this, the entire package that we presented before you this evening also advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, particularly I, E, and AI and E. Overall, we believe that the benefits greatly and substantially outweigh any detriment. We believe that you can grant the variance without any substantial detriment, specifically to the public good, and there won't be any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or master plan. Finally, we believe that the development meets these goals of your master plan. The zoning ordinance advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. And we'll leave it with this fully conforming development, other than the few relief that we're requesting, that'll be a good fit for your overall neighborhood and surrounding area. One of the final things I wanted to provide and close on in referencing Exhibit A3, this facility, although permitted use, and your ordinance and master plan points us to develop something like this, one of the unique characteristics of the site is that this building is really tucked back. So we believe it's a good use. There will not be any negative impact nor nuisances. You heard from the traffic engineer, it doesn't generate a lot of traffic. You heard from my prior engineering testimony, that nuisance associated with noise and maybe trash pickup, all handled internally. It's a pretty quiet, limited hour use, even though it complies with your ordinance and your master plan. But the further benefit from this specific site selection is that it's located off the road. So when you are driving up and down Journey Mill, I don't believe you will notice it too greatly because of some of the existing vegetation that's there, the additional couple hundred plantings that will be going up along the road, which is another reason why we have this driveway, monument sign, and those facade signs. Overall, I think it will be a great addition to this portion of the town. And if there's any questions that you have, please feel free to reach out to us.
Mr. Sewold, in the CME report regarding the landscaping, there's a comment about evergreen trees. They don't qualify as replacement trees, and the tree replacement calculations would be revised. Is that a condition that the applicant will agree to?
Certainly, and we can work with your planner's office. There are certain trees we actually have to put inside of the wetlands. So your ordinance contemplates allowing a lot more trees to be there. So one of the conditions of our wetlands permit is having specific trees in there. So the same requirement is met, in my professional opinion, but we will have to work with your planner on, on where we can place those. So if I have to swap out, maybe put some ornamental or shade along the frontage and then evergreen around the building, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it has to do with the tree preservation ordinance. You, you don't get credit as a replacement tree if you have an evergreen. So you, you're, if you get rid of the evergreens and plant the correct size, you'll get credit. If you leave the evergreens, it's more of a contribution that you'll make to the tree bank as a condition of approval.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Sewold? Alexa, councilman, do you have any questions for Mr. Sewold?
Not, not at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is our presentation. All of our professionals and representative, the applicant are available for questions and comments to the board and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Is there a motion to open to the public on this application? Second?
Full favor?
Aye.
Post?
Any member of the public physically will take first. Present, want to be heard on the application? Good evening, councilwoman.
Good evening. How are, how are you all tonight?
Doing well. Thank you.
Okay, and I first want to thank, yes.
If you could just state your name and your address, and I'll swear you in.
Okay, Donna Roberts, 369 Washington Road, Saraville, New Jersey.
Swear a testimony before this board will be nothing but, will be the whole truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do. Okay, first, I want to thank you for the very thorough presentation, and the colored presentation really made a difference because it was really hard to read the fine lines and the detail. I want to state, I am a councilwoman, but I have no jurisdiction over this. It is not a SERA lot. There is no pilot involved. So I want to just clear that up, that we're not going to be talking about anything like that today. I did have a couple of questions about the tree bank and the tree ordinance, which was somewhat contradictory, and I'll save that for last because I believe that we have our shade tree commissioner on the line also. So I just would like to see, and I see on the screen the shrubbery and, and trees. One of the things that I, I know concerns people is losing a lot of trees during construction, and especially around the pond. It's a very tranquil-looking pond coming down the street. And I was wondering if the plan would be to preserve the trees around that pond, and I believe it's wetlands.
Mr. Kim, and a great question. Couple in there, let me, let me answer them. If I miss anything, please let me know. There will be zero disturbance around Steiner Lake. We are very limited in where we can actually disturb onsite. As I mentioned, there's a few permits from the DEP we have to obtain. We do have our flood hazard permits. Our wetlands permits are pending. We're confident they're going to come. So the limit of disturbance follows the area around our development. The rest of the site will not be modified. There will actually have to be a tree protection fence that is put up around the development to ensure that additional trees are not taken down.
Okay, and to piggyback on that, there's the trees that are surrounding the area. You mentioned earlier that fencing was not going to be something that you have completely around the building or the parameter.
That's correct.
Most storage facilities I'm familiar with have a gate that has like a combination or something like that. Is that going to be part of the facility?
It's not anticipated at this time.
Okay, so it's just drive-through at, at will with your security system. Okay. If I might go through a couple of the other things I have, just in case. And, and I appreciate that it's a low-impact business and, and that 20 trips and, and the reduction of the footprint, I, I think it's a great plan. I may have misheard these two things that I just want to clarify. At the frontage of where you pull in, where the, the roadway is off of Journey Mill, there's going to be a retention pond on a side?
Two above-ground infiltration basins on each side of the driveway.
One on each side or two on each side?
One on each side.
One on each side. And this is the part I think I misheard, a, a solar management facility in the drive-up?
No, so one of the questions from the board planner was, will there be solar facilities on this? And not to get too much in the detail, the roof will be designed to accommodate it. The applicant certainly installs them from different locations. The challenge is actually the local electric company and what they will grant. So many, many years ago, when solar was coming up, they would, the electric companies wanted your power from the solar facilities. It's not exactly that anymore since so much has come online. So a lot of times, they'll say, no matter how much you can generate, we're only going to let you give back a small percentage of that. So then it's not really viable. So as you heard from the applicant's testimony in the beginning, we're not saying no. We just haven't further gotten along with the electric company. It will be designed to accommodate it if they allow us to give the generation back that the solar will do.
Okay, thank you for that. I like the fact that there's no vehicle storage. I probably disagree with the fact that everything has to have a charging station, but that's me personally. And just a little bit about what you anticipate during construction of this. Again, one of the things that many of the residents dislike is seeing stripped-down land. And it looks like your final plan has a plan so that the frontage looks good. But during construction, how much of that will be taken down and then completely replaced? And how much will be retained, if you could?
Certainly. And we'll go to Exhibit A3. I think that's the best area. There's over 700 linear feet of frontage on this 14-foot property on Journey Mill. And the area that is being cleared is about 150 feet, located in the very southeastern portion of the site. Everything to the north of that is protected by the wetlands that we cannot disturb. So the 150 feet of frontage about, of about 700 feet plus will be disturbed and cleared, and this will be the staging area for the contractor. And then certainly, the footprint of the building, the grass and the parking area will be cleared, and the building will come up.
Okay, I think that's all of my questions. I would like the shade tree commissioner to ask his because he probably knows the ordinance better than I do. But if that doesn't answer my questions, may I come up again to follow up?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anyone else physically would like to be heard? I don't see anyone. Let's open it to online, please.
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, Art Rittenhouse, 33 Delicate Lane, Saraville, Chairman, Saraville Shade Tree Commission. Thank you for the presentation.
Sir, sir, just.
Hold on, Mr. Rittenhouse.
You, you jumped the gun. I couldn't, I couldn't write as fast as you were talking. If you could state your name and, and give me your address again?
Yes, Art Rittenhouse, 33 Delicate, D-E-L-I-K-A-T Lane, Saraville, New Jersey.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you give before this board will be the, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to tell the board, sir? Or what?
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I thought it was well done. My concern or my question is, is with the contributions that are going to be made, when will we know when that will be and how much that will be?
Kim, do you want to address that?
Apologies, I don't know the details of the ordinance off top ahead of the Z2 before the final COs issued, Mr. Cornell.
Mr. Chairman, I can clarify. It, it's done as part of resolution compliance. There, in my report, there's a list of outside agency permits that are required, and in there is the tree preservation permit that's obtained from the zoning officer. So if this application is approved, before the final sign-off is given, the applicant will have to get that permit and pay whatever contribution is required to the zoning officers. So that would be done as a condition of approval. As far as the exact amount, you heard some discussion tonight about some trees possibly changing to try to comply more with the ordinance. So I don't think we have an exact number, but they are going to have to comply with all aspects of that ordinance.
And just to clarify, Mr. Cornell, so the, the payment in lieu is due before permits are issued?
Before building permits are issued, correct. It's part of, before you get resolutions, sign-off, you have to make that, get that permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Rittenhouse, any other questions or issues?
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. I appreciate that. Just for the planning board in general, are there any other exceptions that are going to be made so that that ordinance changes? That requirement for the tree bank changes?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is going to comply fully. He's either going to plant trees on the site or make a contribution. It'll be a combination of both. But the actual contribution, I think that number's got to be fine-tuned once we get the final landscape.
Are you, Mr. Rittenhouse, are you asking if the tree ordinance changes from?
No, I'm asking if the planning board is going to make any exceptions.
Oh, exceptions. Well, we haven't voted on the application yet.
And, and I don't think the applicant is seeking any exception from the tree ordinance. They intend to fully comply, sir.
Okay, I appreciate that. That should be a thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else online before I reopen it to the public here in person?
Press star nine or raise your hand. Mr. Rittenhouse, did you want to speak again?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'll lower your hand. That's, that's all then.
Okay, so I'm going to reopen it for live people, and councilwoman, if you want to step up again?
Yes, I do have a follow-up question. It is not for you guys. It is a process question that I just want to clarify, so I, I understand it more fully. And I pulled out the, it was called the Tree Conservation and Reforestation, Chapter 30. And I think I got a little confused because there was one spot where it says that the board, the planning board or Board of Adjustment shall forward a copy of pertinent information to the Shade Tree Commission for their review. Does that happen?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think a secretary can clarify as to the timeframe, but typically, yeah, typically it's sent to the Shade Tree Commission, but.
Yeah, so basically, once we get an application, we receive four copies, and one copy initially always goes to the Shade Tree Commission.
So for this project, that should have already occurred.
Yeah, that happened on January 26, 2023. I sent an email to Mr. Rittenhouse, letting him know that he had plans up at his mailbox.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close to the public? Second?
Full of favor?
Aye. Mr. Kim, did you want to make any further statement?
Chairman, I'll be very brief. I think our planner really nailed it home. Again, everything is conforming except for the sign variances, the few minor design exceptions. And with the conditions agreed upon, we request the board approve the application. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Okay, so it seems that this application is smaller in scope to the existing, at least with regard to the footprint, to the existing approvals. The traffic is less. There's, it's a, it's a probably a better use for the site. The applicant is agreeing to comply with virtually all of the recommendations of our professionals. There's no exceptions being made with respect to the trees. I don't see a downside here. I think this is going to be a positive for the borough. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application based upon all of the. to approve the application based upon all of the conditions that were testified to tonight with the applicant and his professionals.
Mr. Chairman, if possible?
Including, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, before we vote, I just wanted to ask a question for clarity, just more specifically regarding the permits. I know it was previously mentioned, but beyond the NJDP premise still being worked on, are there any others that the board needs to be aware of? And I guess on that, you know, even regarding the wetlands and the potential impact due to construction, are there any, you know, like maybe mitigation measures just in case before construction?
I think there's a list of all the required permits on the CME report. It goes A through J. From my understanding of the wetlands, it is highly regulated. You can't even cut the grass in the wetland area. And the DEP is going to have a whole bunch of restrictions on that. Are there any other permits other than what's in the CME report?
There's 10 permits that are listed. Four of those are DEP, three are Borough, and two are county related. So all of those have to be received before we can have resolution compliance and sign off on the application.
Hey, Councilman, from my, my experience with the NJDEP, when they come to wetlands, it's highly, highly regulated. They, they are very, very restrictive and they enforce. So I think that the mitigation impact is going to be highly regulated by the NJDEP as it pertains to those wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, that's not a borough issue. The borough can't supersede what the DEP is going to require.
That's right. The wetlands are designated by the DEP, not the borough. But any other issues or questions, Councilman?
You know what? I appreciate that clarification. I think the other one that came to mind just from the conversations, you know, from some of our residents before this meeting was, you know, I know the operations and the hours we're ready to discuss, but just wanted to confirm and clarify, you know, concerning the most near residential environments, are there any, you know, would any additional lighting kind of affect their standard of living? And if so, are there any kind of, you know, mitigation standards towards that or any kind of like light protection?
Yeah, I think the applicant is definitely going to be putting in shields, right, that impact the residential across the street. Fortunately, surrounding the most, the majority of the proposed building are going to be the trees and the wetlands. And it's not going to have any impact there. Yeah, and it's 200 feet back from the road. So there's going to be mitigating, mitigating measures to protect the residents across the street from any lighting. Mr. Kim, did you want to answer that?
I just need to clarify that, as the engineer testified, due to the type of lights we're using in the distance setback from the street, let alone the neighbors across the way in Colony, the lights as presently designed will not cause any light spillage onto the roadway or across the street. However, should during the course of operation, the town or the planner determines that there's some measures needed, such as shielding for the lights, we agree to retroactively put them on, even if it's after the COs issue. But again, per the engineer's testimony, we don't anticipate light even reaching the street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Councilman, did that address the concern you raised?
It did. I appreciate all the, all the clarification standards. And please continue with your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks for those questions, Councilman. Yeah, so I'm going to make an application to, I'm going to make a motion to accept the application with the, with the variances and all of the conditions that have been agreed to during this hearing. Is there a second? Erv?
We'll call Mr. Blamar, Mr. Bolton, Councilman Onoha?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Chairman Mueller?
Yes.
Application approved?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and board professionals. Although it always sounds solicitous, we do appreciate the input that we've had and the guidance from your professionals and your board secretary, Beth. Thank you so much, Beth.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
And we will provide Beth with the marked exhibits before we leave this evening. And we understand our responsibility to submit a transcript. Mr. Bartlett, do you require the transcript to prepare the resolution?
If you could email it to me, that'd be great.
Yes, we'll have an expedited resolution prepared, I'm sorry, transcript. And I'll give the court reporting or email so she can email it to you directly. Beth, would you like paper copies of the transcript for the file?
Not paper, email's fine.
Email, and you'll get them as well. Thank you again, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Thank you all. Okay, so we're going to continue with the business for tonight. Do we have a motion to open to the public? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Anyone from the public wish to be heard by the board in person? I don't see anyone.
Anyone from the online Zoom, press star nine or raise your hand if you would like to be heard in the public portion?
Okay. Application to close to the public? Is there a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So next on our agenda is old business, new business, administrative matters. Our next meeting is October 4.
Jay, is there anything, or Beth, is there anything on for October 4?
Mr. Chairman, you do not have any application scheduled for October 4.
So I'll entertain an application to, was it cancel, adjourn the?
We'll take a motion to cancel the October 4 meeting. May I have a motion on that? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I'll entertain an application to adjourn for tonight.
Second, all in favor?
Alexis, feel better.
Thank you, everybody, for joining.
Thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.